Two go to Ann, one I hold. Just one thing for Jim.
Yeah.
Can you pass this along to the builder? Okay, lot three. As we're going up the road looking at it, if the bedrooms could go on the left-hand side against the cemetery. Quiet zone. That's the only thing I have with, you know, where to locate.
The only thing is if you have a four-bedroom house, how do you have all four bedrooms on the left side?
You try, you try to do what you can do with the left on the left side. That's all, that's all I'm asking.
Who's the builder?
Jeff Miller.
Building a mall?
Berkeley Development. He's been here.
Okay, is he doing the roadway or you're doing the roadway?
What's his name?
Jeff Miller and Lamar.
Oh, yes? Okay. That's all?
It's Berkeley Development.
How you spell it, Lamar?
Lamar.
Lamar.
Yep. Is it the member?
Do you have a phone number?
Did we vote to sign it?
Nope.
We had a motion to sign the memorandum.
You'll get one. I do things a little differently, Wally.
Just trying to be legal.
Jeff is nine seven eight 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 four nine three two three.
Yep.
He'd be the one to talk to.
Okay. All right. Can someone pass along to him that we need $5,000 booked into the engineering account for construction purposes?
Yeah, I don't believe he wants to put any deposits down until he closes and all this alone.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. But just, just make him aware it's, it's $5,000.
He's gonna, he's gonna come in with all the forms anyway.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. He said, he said, once they close, then he'll come in and-
Yeah, so he'll just-
And stop.
Sign everything over, turn the forms over at the same time. Okay, that's, okay.
Okay, a motion of sign the M O D.
Seconds.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimous. Oh, well, we'll, we'll pass this on to him, but basically, he needs to contact the engineer 10 days in advance every time of each stage of the work goes on so that the engineer can observe it, that's all.
So Peter?
Peter, yep, that's it.
He has to contact him 10 days in advance?
I'd rather do 10. The, it says 72 hours, but you know, quite frankly, that's like three days and, you know, it could be a weekend, you know, so.
Yeah, it's 10, it's 10 days on the milestones.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd rather, he gets plenty of time, that's all. So his schedule might be such that he'll, he'll be able to give him a date, I'll be there at this date, whatever, okay?
I, I know he's anxious to get things going.
Oh, I know he is, I know he is, yeah. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not here to hold it up, I mean-
The math, the math gets changed.
I mean, once, once, you know, he gets going, Peter will be talking to him all the time. It's just that I want to make sure everything gets looked at and not buried underground. All right, we, we did have one where that was the problem.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Jim.
I'm gonna take it off, but it's that we had one subdivision where things started to get buried underground long before the engineer even got all into it. And that became a-
It's, does the builder have the reg book?
Yes, I don't believe he does.
Okay, so he needs to get a copy of the reg book-
It's online.
And it's, it's very, it's very easy, it's very outlined before all the heavy stuff goes in through 10 days of notice to the, the review engineer, to the board, anyone at the road commissioner. It's all listed in there, it's a simple thing. Send it in letter form so everybody gets it, in case, and it goes to a lot of different people just in case one person, like, we're labor board, so we're not here all the time. So, just so that goes.
Should we get copies of all permits? Or the conditions? Should we get copies of all permits issued on the-
Well, the permits too, but this is during the construction phase. So next up will be the estimates for the construction and the, and putting up the bond and all that stuff like that. That, that'll be going up really quick and all that, so.
When does QuanCom decide about the order conditions?
That's their bailing work, I have no idea. We support it in here, but I don't know.
Have you seen them yet?
Whatever their decision is goes with them. They haven't issued it yet.
Have you gone to them yet?
No, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
He's gonna talk to them.
So they seen, have they signed off?
We haven't, sending the application yet.
Oh. That's a little out of sequence.
Yeah.
You could have changes.
For the order conditions, when you apply-
You could have, they could change something on you that would affect, you know, we support whatever their decision is, it's in there, so whatever their decision is, we honor it. And if it's a change in the plan or something like that, then you gotta change the, I mean, it's a quick fix, but you, just be prepared if it's for changes. I mean, we accept them, but it's not a big deal, but another reason not to sign those. How soon are you gonna get in with them?
Hopefully tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not much down there, is there?
Well, yeah, there's a whole river and-
Oh, the brook?
Well, if there's turtles, they might be down by the brook, I don't think they're gonna scale that hill.
I don't think there's any turtles.
They've been down there, yeah.
They've been down there a couple of times. So they have been on the land during the whole process.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just them that, so, okay. So, as Jim pointed out, three stamps-
Yeah.
On that, Ann gets one, you get one, we get one, throw it in the box. And then that way the timestamps all the same.
Yep.
She just goes click, 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 and we're done on that. And then-
Do you know if he's working on the state entrance permit?
He needs a state highway permit.
Yeah, he's got the permits already.
Oh, he does?
Yeah, they're all written up and everything, and they gotta be submitted and the money.
Just don't want to submit anything until he passes them up.
I am, I am.
Oh. See what he's doing? He wants it in his name before he submits anything. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see.
All right, we're, we're all set with Billis Way.
Yeah, they just gotta, you gotta give them those to scan.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, I'd rather take him to the end.
You want us to take him in?
Yeah.
Okay. You're relieved of duty on that. So, Atwood's next, what's the, anything on that? We fixed everything?
It didn't work on Atwood.
Who's doing that with the other engineer?
That's, you know, well, I, again, I have the M O D.
It's all done?
All done, so I mean-
Yeah, we had a couple of last second things on that, right?
Phil Henry did it, so.
Yeah, oh, he did it? Okay.
Why not I get it rolling down, that's all.
Okay.
All right.
Did Phil get a copy of the boilerplate?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's where a lot of this came from.
Wowoo.
It was a few hours with him, you know, just talking to him about it.
Yeah, I guess so. Are you guys putting up the engineering surety for the, or? I see a check over there or something.
No, we don't, we don't, we do still.
Yeah, that's, engineering review, yeah.
I think it's a surety.
Sorry.
No, it's me, I'm getting a little attention.
Yeah, I see, I see engineering on that, okay.
All right, motion of sign the M O D for Atwood Estates.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
One thing going forward, oh, you got the money? You need the money? Cash?
Is this a stick-up or what?
Chairman and stick-up authority. Going forward, you need to contact Phil Henry and after the removal, are you doing a removal of the materials?
That's part of the subdivision.
Okay, but I mean, we've heard you may be selling that subdivision, so, okay.
Yeah.
It's just that, um-
He just said that, he was gonna take it for you.
What we need to do is, we need to get another $5,000 then in the engineering account so that-
And then you can-
He has to verify certain things along the way.
Yeah.
Okay? Relative to rules and regs. And it's section six, 6.4, I believe. There's certain milestones in there, and what we like to do is that he gets advanced notice 10 days before. And I think probably the first thing he's gonna wanna do is just verify what came out of here in terms of material is correct. That would be the first thing. But, you know, each step of the way, there's pretty much, even, you know, we wanna have enough time that he can make, you know, when you start doing things, that's all, okay?
It's item four in the memorandum.
Yeah. Let's see what else we got. But at this point, you don't know whether you're selling or not, at this point, okay? Okay, all right. If that occurs, please let me know as soon as possible who it is and everything, tell, you know, a name, address, horsepower, phone number, whatever, okay?
Yep, they just have to come in and fill out the paperwork, anyway.
Are we gonna get a copy of it?
Yeah, you're gonna stamp it, he's gonna stamp it, and then you pick them up tomorrow. Is that how you wanna do it, Jim? You want him to pick up their two copies with the clerk?
Yeah, well, she, one she had, one we have to post on the wall. I mean, if we need to make copies, that's fine, you know, it's-
So they get one, she gets one, we get one.
Yeah.
Jim, can we get a Word document, by any chance, that it makes it a lot easier to make that, I presume, for the subdivision, just in case it's, it's changed since the last one?
No, it hasn't changed, I mean, you-
At all?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I can send this to you if you want, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Have you put this stuff on a disc yet? The disc copy, so we're gonna need the three copies on the disc too, so, that's on that. Thank you. One goes to the assessor, Bobby gets one, and Merrimack Valley eventually gets one. That's how we update the zoning maps now.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll give you a buzz tomorrow, and I will email attach that to you anyhow. And, so, done. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next is-
Nichols.
Yeah, Nichols Village.
Good evening again, who wants to give you a quick update?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we, we're hoping we'll be further along for tonight with the development. I talked to Jim earlier, got a letter from Peter, Willis from G Z A, and we saw some outstanding items on the peer review that we need to address with the civil engineer, so we're gonna request a continuance, I believe, until the next meeting on March 20th, as I hope that we'll be prepared with the response that Peter can get back to or set it back to review the revisions, so.
We're still within the timeline, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Not infected.
Infection free. All right, thank you.
When was the, we didn't have a timestamp on this one for a clock, right? It's just a continue the hearing, 'cause we're doing a most modification.
Yeah, I think it's Simone.
Yeah, there's no, there's no mandatory time clock, that's all I was thinking about.
I did bring a letter, if you need a letter, just-
Yeah, we, we should get a letter, so we have a continuous letter, I mean, it's just-
Does that work for you?
Okay, after learning early today that the peer review process is ongoing in the town would not be prepared to issue an approval of our request to modify the special permit, we hereby request a continuance of the public hearing process. We would anticipate that we'd be prepared to have all addressed outstanding issues by the next scheduled meeting of the planning board, which I believe may be scheduled for March 20th, 2018. Okay, so-
Motion to grant the extension.
Okay.
Continuance.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. Steve? Steve Paul, welcome. Sure. All right.
So all these items on the 20th will be, why?
Steve's away, the engineer, so he's gonna have to do up Peter here.
Yeah.
I don't think there's too many major, I think there's some calculations on drainage, he didn't make some changes to that.
Yeah.
Most of it, it was too straightforward, Steve's out, we're further along, but he's the kid, and Peter will take care of that, so.
Has he been in touch with the water sewer as well?
Yeah, water sewer, we did get the letter, they did the review, their peer review agent conducted that, and I believe we've addressed that with Steve, and I'll keep him-
Do you have a copy of that?
No, we haven't.
Can you get a copy from them?
Well, I'll get it from them, you know, but I haven't heard-
Could you ask them to buy it, was it a copy?
Yeah.
He can say it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did with the fire department, obviously, and for, she wrote a letter to the fire department identifying we'll address every single one of their issues. We have no, we have no reason to not, or anything to ask for.
Pretty easy.
Next, we'll, obviously, I know it's sort of, cock before the horse, we'll be meeting with the building department as well, to sort of bring up the, you know, the-
Nothing wrong with early meetings.
Yeah, so.
Peter, have all the other boards committees gotten in touch with you, or have you had a pop-
I spoke to the conservation commission, and I believe that they're, they won't be doing before that, and so it's gonna be more challenge. They're, they're just, they're-
Yeah.
They don't have any issues.
I assume you're talking to Bobby and, all right, well, yeah. I mean, the other thing, with the electric at all, yeah.
We will have a new, you know, new power connection to the additions, so we need a transformer and a robot, electric or something like that.
Okay.
That's a part of this review though, right?
Yeah, did you guys run the, where's the transformer gonna go, on the backside?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're issuing a new generator as well, the current generator is the size for the addition, so-
Yeah.
Transformer generator right outside the service portion of the building.
Okay, and you're gonna set a new, what, a 10 KW, what are you setting for a transformer? Do you know yet?
I do not know.
Okay, they're just gonna go side by side. So the primaries are already there, then? Yeah, okay.
Do we need to do an M O D on this at all?
It'll be in a, granted with approval, it's, it's not called an M O D, but it's gonna be an approval modification to the special permit, so.
One page?
It depends on what they got, yeah. It may or may not be one page, I mean, it's a couple pages anyway, just to include what it is.
Yeah.
That's it, that's, um-
You need something to describe it?
Right, it's a description of the changes and the modification.
Conditions at the board, yeah.
And then a little, I think the little history where we already knew this was coming in, and we had already sized this thing for this big. That's what I was asking about those units before, 'cause I knew we sized this thing way up and you guys were way under. So it just, it just goes hand in hand with the special permit process from prior, and this is just a slight mod and the board takes it from there. But again, anyone picking it up, we'll see, oh, yeah.
That's one of the questions, my first comment is, it appears, and I'm not 100% sure that this might be site plan review, I don't know if the board agrees with that, or probably stand on this issue.
It's kind of, we're kind of doing it-
Yeah.
In the site plan review, and under special permit, you know, it's, it's a mod to the, to the existing special permit, but, you know, that's the most intensive going through. But we are doing the site plan as we're going through, we're hitting every single checkbox along the way. So the verbiage could include the site plan language because we're doing it.
I guess I, I mentioned that because in case, you know, they go, they go through this whole process, and they go before the building inspector, and you may say, oh, did you have, yeah, did you do a site plan review?
Yeah, well, we're, we are doing it.
Well, I'm saying the building inspector, well, no, not official.
So then-
No, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't site, filled out a form for it, have they? Site plan?
No, we filled out a, the more intense form, which is the modification to, to special permit, which includes just about everything, including the kitchen sink.
I guess it's advisement to them, so the legal team may wanna check that and make sure that-
Yeah.
It's not a stumbling block.
So, in other words, on the issuance of the decision, we should, we should take a second look at the, at the site plan review just to make sure, and say that the special permit modification included the site plan review process, just to make sure that we are clicking all those bases. And if there's a form, you're right, we should get that filled out. Good point.
Would you recommend a conversation for us to have with a building inspector sooner?
Always, always good.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah.
I was trying to hear you say it, Pierre.
And the site plan, the form, it's a short form, it's online, site plan and review form.
So they, they could run the hearing on, on the hearing.
Right.
It's a meeting, so they can do it comparatively with the process that's ongoing.
In the, in the review process, you're already doing it, that's what I mean. I mean, everything that would be in, in site plan review, we're doing, so that, but-
It's really paperwork exercise at this point.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
That's where you still were gonna get, yeah, but I just hate to see, oh, no, I appreciate that, we'd really get it done.
No, we'd have to go back through and recertify that we actually did it when we actually did it.
It's online.
Yeah, it, it is online.
It's on, if you go to planning, we'll go to town and grow on planning.
Well, they're pretty bad. No, I don't, it comes up automatically. All right, so the water and sewer letter, we can get that to you, QuanCom was okay, fire department.
Yeah.
Any other departments we should be aware of, water help, Peter mentioned, it's okay.
Did the P D respond?
That's a later stage.
Yeah, for now, I mean-
Water help. You said fire department got back to you?
They did not.
Oh, they did not, okay.
No, we met with them, we wrote a letter conceding that we give everything they've asked for.
Yeah.
You know, in due time, any of the things they're looking for, you know, during the construction process.
Right.
So, that letter has gone unanswered.
Okay, what about the P D for, you know, emergency response and ambulance response and say key that? You know, do you guys, how, well, that's a dumb question, on my part. When a 911 call, if it ever comes in from there, does it go to central dispatch, or do you guys have your own contracts with ambulance service and everything?
No, comes into here.
It comes into here, so, so that's something that you just need to, they need to know the P D too, that they're gonna get the call.
Well, they know that.
Okay, so, you're adding so many units and-
That's right.
Okay.
That's, I mean, yes, there's a number of items they're looking for in this project, not only to make sure this addition fully complies with all applicable codes-
Right.
But also to go back and confirm the existing building and how it relates to the-
Now, is that on the F D or the P D?
That's on the fire department.
Okay, and the P D?
The police department also should weigh in.
Police department, that's, weigh in as well.
If you send them literally exactly what you sent the fire department, they'll, they'll run through the same process from their point of view.
Yeah.
We can, we can find that by, by police department.
Yeah.
Do you know who the person is at the police department who is doing the review?
Well, that's them.
It's not Jeff Gillen, he's the chief of police, I mean, if he needs to put it elsewhere, he will.
He just sent us one on another subdivision, so I think he's up on the process now.
I don't know what to tell you about the fire department, I mean, the only other suggestion is, is do a follow-up letter, that's all, we haven't heard from you, like to, that's it. If he doesn't respond, noted on your copy of the letter, that's all.
I mean, essentially, and now, I know this is the planning process, but to obtain a building permit, to me, I look at that as another very large hurdle, and I usually get very, you know, intense with the, you know, fire department and building department and walking through all the details and starting to incorporate that into the documents and that, it's a natural course of following up and confirming, otherwise we don't get a building permit.
Yeah, no, that, I hear you, so.
It's just that there's some things that kind of got missed lately, and, you know, it's, I don't know what's going on either, nobody knows.
All right, well, we'll cover our bases. We'll get you, we'll get you secure in our area.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
I mean, when, if you're talking to the building inspector, let him know that, where you are with the fire department, and see what he, see what he suggests.
Okay.
Ready to go.
Okay.
Yep.
Be one way of covering everything.
Since the minute I walked.
Okay. One, one last item, I mean, you know, we talked about a little bit today, the affordable housing, you guys wanna make a contribution or what?
I don't know how that would work with this, this Aprils Village, which, uh-
It, it, I know, it's kind of a Peter Toddler thing, but nothing counts, that's been the problem, one way or the other. We need to get any money, nor does anything count. The intrinsic value, when you say they put up $200,000, is actually under the, the cost of an affordable unit of $234,000. Essentially, they're all affordable.
Well, the $200,000 would not be across the board, there's a varying level of tier interest fee. So some are more than that, it ranges from probably two up to $500,000, so there's a, there's a range.
But some of them would reach that, and if 25% of them were at that, bingo.
Well, in addition to that, there's-
They've never counted, that's the problem.
There are a few different models, there's a rental, there's a rental option as well as a common fee, so they are paying a monthly fee in addition to that, so that's-
But that's-
I don't know if that's within the affordability guidelines.
Yeah, condos still pay condo fees anyhow, e- even, some states, subdivisions pay annual fees and monthly fees within a subdivision, so, that's kind of like outside of the cost of the unit. I mean, I, I, I think the worst thing that's happened really is the common will doesn't even recognize senior housing anymore, all they want is family housing. So, I mean, even if we were to get it, I don't know if they'd accept it, that's, that's what bothers me. One way or another, we, we end up losing ones, so. We pick up 80,000 of subdivision, we'll get it out of Billis Way, we'll get it out of Atwood Estates. And at that point, I think we'll be somewhere about 480,000 bucks when we get all that money,[1740.33] And at that point, I think, uh, we'll be somewhere about 480,000 bucks when we get all that money, you know, that we brought in from subdivision. Not that anything's been built or anything's on a drawing degree system, at, which is kind of hard to understand at times.
Well, separate from Nichols, you know, Bethany Community Services Management Committee, our report, we, we do affordable housing. Sites inhaleable to remanage, which is low income senior housing. Our long-term mission is to produce more housing, we know there's gonna be a huge need for seniors, over the next five to 10 to 15, 20 years longer. Speaking not for Nichols but for Bethany, we'd, we'd be interested in pursuing more truly affordable housing in the area, so it's something we can talk about. The funding is difficult, it's a long-term process, it's three to four years out at least, uh, it's complicated, but for the long term, there's a need for that. So I could speak to you about that, you know, in the future for development, because the town does need, I know that probably a 3% you have right now, other 10 you need for the.
Three and a half percent, 40 be an explosion.
And you're right, Jim, I think, uh, family housing is what the Commonwealth wants and the governor wants, but the day is coming, senior housing is gonna be a big need, there hasn't been many new senior housing built in the area. That's kind of a separate conversation.
Well, there, there is this housing committee in the town, that's got about 20 members, Bobby.
Yeah?
Yeah, remember those meetings we've gone to and heard the same old, same old? Uh, it, it's, it's, it's a real need, you know, to, from a senior standpoint, we've heard, we've been hearing this for months. You know, can you get something that's affordable for them? So they sell their bigger house and get into a smaller house, and so far, there's been one builder came forth with a 1,650 square foot home that he could sell for an affordable price of half a million bucks. And, you know, I said, well, you know, that's not what they got in mind. They wanna sell the big house for half a million bucks and they wanna take out as much as they can and live on it. So that the affordable housing that they're thinking about is a lot less and the only things that I've seen like that is up, midway up in New Hampshire and the same in, um, in Maine, Lewiston in Maine and, where's it, Tilton, New Hampshire?
That's a ways out.
Yeah, it's a way up.
It's a long commute.
Yeah, it is. Unless you are fully retired and you love black flies, you know, so, yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I did my pitch.
All right, bold business is up, what do we got?
Uh, you know who. Tony, if we probably, if we've got any good weather this weekend, you know, you want, you wanna take a walk out there and take a look at that.
Yeah, it's gonna rain and snow, but Thursday, Friday.
I know.
No good weather this weekend.
So we're not, we got bad weather, I'm, I'm not watching the weather, so.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday.
It's gonna be very windy.
I'm out of luck again on that one. I mean, we, we're gonna have to look at it, uh, you try to get, you know.
How about, I'm sorry, Jim, how about Peter, do we need a Peter for anything else?
No, you all go home, we'll let you.
I actually have a, something I wanna talk to the board about as possible.
All right.
Good.
May I do it now?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to put the board that, um, actually, as of Friday, I'm gonna be retiring.
Okay.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
You lucky dog.
I know.
I know.
Should I offer him the job of inspector?
Well, now, who's gonna take you?
Who's gonna take over?
I, I will be a on-call part-time employee for.
Consultant, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, all right, so I'll, I'll be finishing out the contracts that we have with the board right now.
Okay.
Finishing out that, and, um, and, you know, I'll, I'll still have the same email and, and, and phone, so he can contact me and everything, the last couple projects that we have ongoing.
Yeah, now, does that include through the, the ones we just signed that are gonna go through the building process for the next three years?
Well, Atwood isn't one of them.
No.
Okay.
Billis is, I'd probably like, if you have one of the other consultants review it, because it really, it's a, it's a breaking point, I mean.
Right, that's.
Construction inspection, you're just enforcing the plans that have been approved.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, if the board had strong feelings that GZA should, you know, do the construction inspection on Billis, we'd provide it, but I'd prefer not to.
Okay, another board, we can talk about that.
Well, the real problem is.
We got time to talk about that.
Yeah, they, they still gotta go through Conservation.
I know, that kind of threw me back.
Yeah, a little bit.
In the.
They don't know what they're doing.
The, the only other problem that I see that sometimes what happens is the, um, we had to do this once and I can't remember why we did it in the last 20 years. But we did have to bring another engineer in to do the review work that another engineer reviewed, and it got scrambly somewhere because of a difference in.
Yeah, but they're not gonna, he's not gonna review it again.
Well, they're gonna be reviewing it based upon the plan.
Just on the plan, yeah, the approved plan.
Ensuring it's constructed properly and then he provides all the information required.
Get anyone to do that, get someone else.
Yeah, we did, we did it once, I can't remember why we did it though, but anyway, we looked that up.
Probably was, no, I can't say.
You, you think?
We've done that in other problems, the opposite way, on large projects taking over.
No, we're just, we can get, will.
Yeah, we'll find that.
No, Matt, I'm glad you said that, so, so Jim, did you, you understand what he said?
Yeah.
He doesn't, actually, he'll finish the reviews for the plan.
But then we get someone else in.
Day-to-day inspection, I mean, because we're gonna have, have to get someone to inspect bullet points of the project, like after it's cleared, site cleared. Get the road to subgrade, that should inspect the subgrade, yeah.
Got anybody at your shop that's interested in doing that kind of stuff?
Can we just get one of the other, just one of the other engineers to just pick it up?
Yeah.
Woody or Henry or? Yeah, I mean, at that point, it's just fieldwork, basically.
I understand it, but, I mean, you know, there's fieldwork, there's fieldwork, there's fieldwork at this fee and there's fieldwork at this fee, okay?
I don't think the fees really matter, we need someone to qualify to make sure that sunset doesn't happen again.
No, it's, tell me about it.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
It's as critical as the review.
Absolutely.
A competent person doing the inspection.
Well, we, we, you know, we've seen that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the real, the real problem is right now, I mean.
So are you gonna still do reviews, Peter?
No, I'm.
He's, he's done. He's gonna be on his boat somewhere.
I wish.
All right. Okay.
Oh, so you're just gonna be like part-time until we finish these reviews?
Yeah, I have a couple of my own projects.
And you have some others, yeah.
To finish up, and there may be some interesting stuff that, you say, hey, you wanna work on this, I'll say, okay.
Okay, got it.
But I really need to.
But GZA is gonna assign someone.
I gotta cut down my time.
Yeah, GZA is gonna assign someone, correct?
Um, yes, yes, I work hand in hand with Matt Groshoe, but for your projects, you're still only gonna see me and I'm gonna be responsible for finishing up.
Yeah.
Um, basically Nichols Way now and, um, the Estes Way subdivision inspection.
But how about if new ones come in, who's gonna do that?
I, I don't think that we're gonna, we'll be providing those services.
So GZA as a company doesn't wanna.
Can you just submit, or have someone submit a letter to the board on that, that, just so we know which ones you're gonna be looking at and what you're, so we have some dates in mind, what we have to assign out.
So I understand, GZA is not gonna do any future reviews.
Just the current projects we have at the moment.
We have some, some towns that, um, probably closer to our office.
Yeah.
That I'm gonna have.
No, I mean here, yeah.
With someone that's been working with me, but with this one, no further reviews, definitely.
Yeah, all right, yeah, just submit that to the board, that sounds great, yeah, and good luck in retirement.
Yes, good luck.
Yeah.
Yes, I hope so. It's a big step, I mean, actually, it's Friday, I'm, um.
Yeah.
Wow.
Three days, so that's.
Wow.
You got the party Saturday or what?
No.
Party all day Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many years?
I think I had, um, with GZA, I mean, it's been like four years, yeah.
Wow, wow, it's a long time.
And it has to do with a lot of personal reasons, um, my wife.
Been ill, yeah.
Declining, so it's making me.
I knew that.
To work.
We wish luck with that.
Well, you have to spend time at home, right.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm at the age, and I can do it, and I need to do it because it's, it's stress levels between the home and trying to work at the same time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, that's the luck, yeah, all right.
Hopefully we can get those guys, you know, to take action on it.
Yeah, are you gonna come in with Hawaiian shirts and everything else?
I'm a silky employee of GZA. I can look semi-professional.
Do they have Hawaiian shirts with GZA?
No, but I can suggest that.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, the, the only thing is, it's Tony, you know, is what the hell are we gonna do, because, you know, I couldn't get Bob O'Hanley and John Hargraves together, okay? I tried to get John Hargraves to call Bob, I got, I got, Bob did call John Hargraves, Hargraves did not call back.
Well, we got Bob Smith's report coming out any day now.
Yeah, that's maybe, but I, I think what the real problem that O'Hanley's telling me and what Hargraves is telling me, Tony who doesn't want is going on his land. And what they had initially wanted to do was to go not deep, deep, deep into the back door, but probably at least 10 feet, but they were gonna level it. He doesn't want that.
Okay.
So, when it comes to that banking, to keep that banking strictly on Sunset's land. I'm even having a hard time, sometimes I'm seeing three stakes together, you know, within about a few inches of one another, I don't know where the hell the damn line is.
Well, that's.
You know, I gotta figure out that first, because if we shave that banking, like I'm saying, part of it goes out 12 feet and some of it only goes out about four or five feet. If we bring it back to an average of six, are we, where are we there, are we still on Sunset's land, are we on, you know what I'm saying? But how, what kind of tilt is that at that point?
Well, that's, you know what, we may have to get, uh, Bob Smith out there, whoever's, and with us, and, and shoot that line and find out what that is and brainstorm it on site.
Should we have Hargraves there at the same time?
And Bob Smith or, well, he's their engineer, so yeah.
I wanna, I'd like to come up with two proposals, okay, so we hit Tony with two.
Yeah.
As to what to do, now, you know, what O'Hanley's telling me, that if you do build us a wall down at the bottom, you know, like a three-foot wall or a 24-inch wall, whatever it is. You know, you put the perforated pipe in, but you put, you know, the stone in underneath of that, so that if there is any water coming off of that hill, it ain't gonna go on Tony's land.
That's right, yeah, that's, that's normal anyway, it's all built on stone.
But then when they're talking, when Hargraves is talking this carpet of grass, okay? Bob didn't, O'Hanley didn't really ever work with any of that, he had done, stayed grassy, that takes pretty good.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, and.
It's essentially like a, it's like a sod on steroids, it's not, it is essentially like a carpet of grass, it's, it's just very lush sod. But it takes pretty well on a slope.
Think it'll work? Think it, do you think it will work?
Without going out there to see it, it depends, it should work. I don't see how they can implement it without touching at least some portion of Tony's land.
So, so we should get those two engineers out there for an hour before we get there and then everybody brainstorm on site and see what the, come up with solutions and then pitch them.
Well, at this point, we can't do it this weekend, so we're gonna have to put it off.
Okay, but the engineers can go anytime, those guys can go during the week.
Well.
Should get Bob Smith out there with, yeah, with Hargraves and say, hey, we gotta brainstorm a fix for this. And then get them talking engineering-wise, slopes, shoot the line, find out where that is.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Part of my job description.
He's doing a hell of a job. I'd put him in for a raise, but, things being what they are, you know, they're looking for donations.
So are we meeting next week or are we only meeting on the 20th?
No, we're gonna meet on the 6th, I, you know, what I have to do, it's gonna be more the articles.
Okay.
Close that out, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, and it wasn't a whole lot of change per se, but it looks like a lot of change, because I had to rewrite, you know, the header of the article, you know, so I.
So this will be the, this is the finished product to vote it in?
Yeah, we gotta get this done.
Okay.
Gotta get it rolling.
Because we went through a lot of it on the changes, so this will be the final doc vote to send it out to.
Plus, we get, we have a sixth one now, and that is the recreational marijuana, you know, that the selectman had written that says no. Okay, so, you know, we, now we got six of these things, and when you look at a lot of these, they're multiple parts. And some of them are like five parts, you know, where you're taking out things in two different parts of the bylaw and then putting in things in three different parts of the bylaw. So some of these articles, it's, at times, may start sounding a little funny. That's the whole problem, you get into the definitions, and there are multiple changes within the definitions, where you're going from the definition we had to the building code definition.
Yeah, that's explainable though, I mean, that's, that's easy.
It's explainable, you know, but already, I mean, I, in one part of the bylaw, town council is, is even said he doesn't like using the building code definition. And he liked the definition that we have in the bylaw, because he feels as though that he can try in court. And that the, he's said that in the past, some building code definitions have failed in court.
That's interesting.
You know, and I mean, it's.
We gotta come up with a name, if we gotta use the industry standard, whatever technical jargon that is.
Yeah, I mean, my, my whole thing is always, you know, you keep the town out of lawsuits, but yet every time I turn around, I hear we got another lawsuit, it's very quiet.
Building code is building code.
Right. Yeah.
I can't imagine, I mean, there can't be that many instances where the building code definition wouldn't hold up in court. It's, it's state-accepted, it's the building code.
It's like, it's like the electrical code, it's all the same and we all operate under the same code, so we know what it says and we know what it does, you can't go town to town with a different electrical code. So the building code should, should be fairly close, you know, I'm sure there's some, you know, you can put out your own Town of Groveland addendum. I mean, I've seen that before, where you can have a Town of, Town of Groveland addendum to the, to the zoning bylaws in enhancement to the building code, which might be what council's talking about.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Nothing wrong with that.
And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this has been a lot of work to get these things to where they are right now.
When is town meeting?
April.
End of April, last Monday in April.
Yeah, last Monday in April.
23rd?
Okay.
It's coming fast.
Yep, all right, so let's get it done next weekend.
All right.
All right, motion or adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
Aye. Thank you for watching.
Nobody wants a stay.
Yep, yeah, we're adjourned, thank you, thanks for watching and all.
I'm gonna have you sign my papers, please.